You are watching Access LaPorte County Channel ninety seven. Coming up next is the April eighteenth twenty twenty three meeting of the Michigan City Common Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
Good evening and welcome to our April eighteenth meeting of the Michigan City Common Council. If everyone could please silence all electronic devices and stand for the pledge of allegiance and silent prayer.
My pledge of allegiance to this land and commonwealth, which is sacred, one nation, and I am God. Invisible, let's be children of God.
Miss Nyle, upon the roll call, please.
Mister Dabney.
Present.
Mister Fitzpatrick.
Present.
Mister Matt.
Present.
Miss Dyche.
Present.
Mister Don Prezabulinski.
Present.
Mister Paul Prezabulinski.
Present.
Mister Simmons.
Present.
Miss Jagus.
Present.
And Miss Tillman.
Present.
We have nine present and no one else.
We have a call on to the approval of the minutes of our regular April fourth twenty twenty three meeting and executive session labor relations April fifth twenty twenty three.
Motion to approve.
Second, I have a motion to approve by Councilman Don Prezabulinski and second by Councilman Jane Simmons. Miss Nyle, upon the vote, please.
Mister Matt.
Yay.
Miss Dyche.
Aye.
Mister Don Prezabulinski.
Aye.
Mister Simmons.
Aye.
Mister Jagus.
Aye.
Mister Paul Prezabulinski.
Aye.
Miss Tillman.
Aye.
Mister Dabney.
Aye.
And Mister Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Our reports outstanding, please. Finance committee.
Thank you, Mister President. The Michigan City Finance Committee meeting met today, April, uh, April eighteenth twenty twenty three. The Michigan City Riverboat Claims Dockage for April eighteenth twenty twenty three. Riverboat Fund number two, two, three, five, fifteen thousand four hundred fifteen dollars sixteen cents. Riverboat E F T Fund number two, two, three, five, zero dollars. Boy Development E F T Fund number two, five, zero, four. Total claims fifteen thousand four hundred fifteen dollars sixteen cents. Those claims was for current electric in the amount of three hundred eight dollars ninety two cents. Laporte Chrysler Inc., six thousand four hundred thirty five dollars. Way Meyer APS Inc. Doing Business As Way Meyer, eight thousand six hundred seventy one dollars twenty four cents. Totalling fifteen thousand four hundred fifteen dollars and sixteen cents in claims. The claims was approved by, um, was, was approved. And we also. Uh, for the city of Michigan City, the Riverboat Statement of Cash Position Fiscal Year to Date. April seventeen twenty twenty three in the balance in the amount of five million four hundred fifty three dollars, eight hundred eighty five dollars, six cents. Also, in attendance was Controller Hoxmaster and she did, um, go over the, um, purchase orders. Which was already approved in our prior budget. And there was also conversation in regards to the ordinance or second reading that is coming before us tonight. On the creating sections two dash four, one, nine in the city, Michigan City Municipal Code to Establish Criteria for the Utilization of the Public Safety Lit Funds.
Thank you, Councilwoman, uh, Claims Dockage. April eighteen twenty twenty three Fund twenty two thirty five Riverboat Claims fifteen thousand four hundred fifteen dollars and sixteen cent. Fund twenty five zero four Boy Development zero dollars for a total claims of fifteen thousand four hundred fifteen dollars and sixteen cent. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Support.
I have a motion to approve, uh, by Councilman Don Prezabulinski and second by Councilwoman Tracy Tillman. Uh, Miss Nyle, upon the vote, please.
Miss Dyche.
Aye.
Mister Don Prezabulinski.
Aye.
Mister Simmons.
Aye.
Miss Jagus.
Aye.
Mister Paul Prezabulinski.
Aye.
Miss Tillman.
Aye.
Mister Dabney.
Aye.
Mister Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
And Mister Matt.
Bye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Miss Nyle. Uh, Riverboat Boy Development Purchase Orders for April eighteen twenty twenty three. Riverboats, one million seven hundred and fifty nine thousand eight hundred twenty four dollars and eighty two cent. Boy Development total three hundred and fifty five thousand. Uh, we don't approve those, though, but we do. Our reports from boards and commissions. Our reports of special or select committees. Reports from mayor or other city officers and departments. We have Clarence Hall, so economic development.
Nobody else can perform it, so. Good evening, Mister President and City Council members. I'm here to give you an annual report from the, uh, Department of Agency, Clarence Hall's A D C M C Director. Um, I've got a couple of slides I want to, uh, run through with you and, uh, then open up for questions. Um, we're having to report that, uh, you know, we've been in business twenty five years working with the city. Um, it's been a great relationship. Um, I'm, I guess, the, uh, Port Director with the agency and, uh, we've done a lot of work with the city and the community. So we'd like to see it continue hopefully in the twenty five years. Uh, last year's economic impact and you should have a copy of that report in your binder, uh, that lists all the projects. Um, was over two hundred and fifty eight million dollars, um, different projects coming to the city. And so those are listed in your packet. Um, we've got, um, the city, I, I tell people it's been discovered by a lot of developers. Uh, we had a breakfast last week. Uh, we had folks from Atlanta, New York, Milwaukee, uh, Chicago Land, uh, Fort Indianapolis, Best Solid Band. So, uh, there's a lot of folks looking to invest in our community, which is, which is awesome. And, uh, as housing is a big, um, issue and so, um, that I'm hoping we can address, you know, in more than one ways, but, um. We celebrated, uh, Burnham Brewing opening up in, um, my native downtown. We think that would be a great addition to our community. Uh, they've been here for almost, uh, twelve years, uh, been operating in, off, uh, Fire Road. And, uh, so we've worked within the last five years again on location in our downtown. A great project for the community would be the Health Link Clinic. Um, they are currently, um, uh, behind the Ivy Tech building off Franklin. Uh, they brought run last, uh, October and they're hoping to be open, um, uh, this, this, uh, next year, this year. Um, great project, uh, does some people already is over eighteen thousand people in Laporte County who don't access the healthcare. So look at some of the offerings they're offering, um, they'll be working with a lot of residents who don't have access to healthcare. And so, um, they're federal health clinics, so this serve everybody who walks in. And it's, it's done by income guidelines. Um, one of the great thing about this project is they're behind Ivy Tech. And, uh, so you can get your training at Ivy Tech and walk across the parking lot to get your, your, your clinicals. And so, and so the huddles are excited about it because it'll be a great partnership. Uh, one of the project everybody is talking about is, of course, the, uh, um, train station. Um, we are excited because they've got most of their funding in place. They'll be looking for, uh, contractors, trying to get bids, um, returned and of course, remember the change they've done a good for bid. Um, but they're hoping to break run, um, June, July of this year. And, uh, they've gotten their funding from the state and they're trying to get the bond paperwork, um, put together so they can come before the council at some point. Uh, but great project, uh, of the two hundred and twenty units. The goal is to have this fully completed by, uh, spring of twenty twenty five. Um, one of the things that I've asked from the city is that when they get, uh, their first three floors built to have temporary CEOs. Because that way they can start filling up the building as they, as they go every three floors. So by the time they get to the twelfth floor, they'll probably be roughly two hundred people living there. We're two hundred plus people living downtown. So you'll see a lot of change down, down. Um, keep in mind, uh, progress bring problems. So roughly, smaller people will be working at that site every day. So, uh, there'll be a lot of traffic jams, trains and a few other things, um, pent, pent in Franklin. Um, but, um, when it's finished, um, nationally, they look at two, two and a half persons per unit average. So you're roughly looking at roughly forty to twenty people, um, at the station, so. You're beautiful project. Um, we had a breakfast last weekend, the developer was a speaker and he talked about why he thinks, why he is here in Michigan City. Well, why he's spending toward and forty million dollars in Michigan City. And, uh, he says he's lived in the air for twenty five years, drove to work back and forth and always wonder why, you know, couldn't do anything here. And so he thinks the right time and he think he's, he's betting big on Michigan City. And so that's why he's doing this. But this would be a, a great project for a community again. It has two hotel flags, um, condo project and it's bringing a lot of new people to our downtown. And they're looking to have, uh, public space on the fourth floor, which is of the garage could be a swimming pool open to the public. And they hope and turn to a skating rink during the winter. So, um, so it'd be a great amenity for the waterfront in the future. That's a hundred and fifty condos. So again, using the two, two and a half average numbers, that's roughly three hundred people. That site would be, uh, roughly inner people working on that site for the next three years. So again, um, lots of activity, people looking to buy food shop in our community in the next, uh, three years. Uh, Connor of, uh, Eight in Michigan, this project is the workforce housing project that we've talked about. They are currently, um, have an application to the state for tax credits. To be qualified as the workforce project, you have to have corporate and tax credit, which lower the cost of rentals. So let's say I wanted to really this fourteen hundred dollars, they're going to charge up to a thousand. So you want to make sure that people who are, uh, want to work in downtown and live in downtown can actually afford to live downtown. And so, uh, we try to make sure this project gets the funding and needs from the state, uh, to make that work. Uh, one of the great projects we've got coming in, in the pipeline is, uh, a single family subdivision, uh, corner of Paz Road and Woodlands. Uh, this will be afforded the, uh, planning commission in probably two weeks. Uh, but we, um, four years ago, we went and documented every piece of property in the city we could use for residential development. And we started marketing to all the developer within probably two hundred miles. And so, uh, we finally got a hit out of Michigan. These guys do about a thousand homes a year. So the goal right now is to, um, put in all the water sewer lines, uh, this fall and they grow on their first, first phase, uh, next spring. The goal is to have their three homes built open by, by next fall. And so they have multiple options and the good, the good thing is they're starting range between two seven to three twenty five, which I think we think is a great number. Because that's our middle market we don't have for right now, Michigan City. Everything is really low or really high. And so, um, so they'll be coming to, I guess you guys will be getting the, um, application soon once he goes to the planning commission. Uh, to come before this body, but, uh, from what everything we've seen, they're great developers, they pay their own way and they want to be here, so. Uh, this pro, this project is part of eleven that was annexed, I think, three years ago, four years ago. And we are, would like to see water sewer net soon. We've got a number of people knocking on our doors and they walked away because, uh, we don't have the water in sewer. So hope as soon that will become a reality for us. Um, P D D boundary, um, those of you who, uh, been involved with double track, uh, probably are aware that July first of this year. Uh, basically it will be one of six cities in the state that has these boundaries. And what this does is it helps to grow around the train station area. Um, one of the things about this is the make the, and the R D A has a studies done in this whole area. And what they're trying to do is create a T if that will pay off somebody debt from the state, but also allow the citizens to get some funding for what the growth in the future. So we've looked at the properties in those areas and, uh, right. Um, also the R D A had done some studies and they're looking at roughly, uh, between three, three thousand five hundred to five, five hundred people living there in the next ten years. They're based on land use patterns, based on whether they're condos, apartments, single family duplex commercials. So that number changes based on what's built. So, but that's the projection. Um, not a great project in the pipeline, um, knock on wood. If you guys have any friends in Senate, we need to get some phone calls made, but, uh, we're trying to get this project funded, uh, twenty five million dollars. Uh, don't know how many people are involved with Ivy Tech, but, um, great community, um, school. And, uh, we need to have it look better. Uh, it's an old building, I think over two thirds not being used. And so, um, or employer authorities, they need to have training in our community and whether it's manufacturing, healthcare, uh, business. And so we like to see a better building in our community. And so they are chancellor, uh, Mister Axosikoski, he may be here in the room, but he's been fighting for us to get that done. And, uh, but he needs some help. So if you guys have any friend at the Senate, um, we're at the final stage of, uh, funding right now and in the meeting this week. So we're trying to get that, this funded. So there's a lot of people competing for dollars across the state. We were number two in the system, we think we dropped to number four. So there's a lot of, you know, wheeling and dealing going on behind the scenes. But, uh, we'd like to make sure this gets funded and hopefully we'll have a new compass, uh, during the future, so. Market mall, this is a project everybody asks about. Um, we, we did this render with the commission about two years ago. Um, we've been knocking on doors of, um, large developers. Some have asked questions, asked for information, we sent it back out. Some people go dark, some people call us. Um, I tell you, it was a five year project to get started because, um, for anybody to get involved, it takes a year just to go through all the leases, the environmentals. And so some people after six months, eight months, they decided to walk away. Uh, but it's going to be somebody with deep pockets. I know, um, there's one being done in Skokie, Illinois. Uh, they're spending hundred and fifty million dollars, you know, go in, knock it down or knock parts of it down, put new roads in and really start over. So it's going to take a lot of money. So we've got the folks in Los Angeles, Detroit, um, getting some interest. Nobody's really bitten the bullet yet. Um, but, uh, we're going to keep knocking on doors, so. Early childcare education, something we got involved with last year. Uh, we had a, there was a study done by Work One that showed over two thousand families in Laporte County have lost the childcare. Uh, with six hundred was based in Michigan City. So we started looking at how we can help. And so we've been working with a group called I F F out of, um, um, Indianapolis and trying to figure out how to help mom and pops. Because those are the ones taking care of the kids. And so we've been trying to find ways to improve their accounting, um, uh, insurance capacity, but also training. Um, because a lot of them are lower paid. And so how do we get people back in, into that field? Not only, um, make it childcare, but make it early education. So we are, M C S has come to the, to the forefront and they'll be offering, um, a curriculum for training. That way the, the, the kids can learn how to count and spell and all that and before they get to elementary. So we're excited about this project because we know there's better childcare, cheaper childcare. Um, people will go back to work. And so, um, people are calling us, telling us they need bodies, but really, um, in your packet will show you how many people are looking for work in Laporte County, Michigan City. We've got more jobs than people. The last three months, we've got over three thousand jobs in Michigan City. We've got twelve hundred people looking for, for work. So obviously we have more jobs than people, so. Um, one of the project that got started late last year and will go into the next three years is, uh, Brookings, um, Institute and Lisk. And this is a big deal for Michigan City. For those of you who don't know who Brookings is, they are like case studies for the White House, uh, Congress. And so we're excited out there in Michigan City. Uh, we were very fortunate to be selected as one of three small cities, let's get it big. Um, typically they work for the big cities, the Chicagos, the Philadelphias and New York. So they're here to help, um, in our community. Uh, one of the things they want to look at, what are the highest, um, poverty area in Michigan City? And how can we start making change in those communities in the next three years? And so we've been having meetings, we're having a committee meeting this Thursday at six P M at the Hope Center. Everybody is welcome to come out. Um, the goal is how can we provide more, you got to help for those communities in Michigan City? And what they're doing is take the responses, help with the playbook, but they're not going to walk away. They're saying, we want to help you to find funding to work with the small government, your government, to help you figure out how to make this stuff work. So that's the exciting part. You can do a lot of studies and put it on the shelf, but for them to stay on the next three years and help us out, that's the best part of this deal. And this is a, is another master nonprofit. They can, they do loans, they can build houses, build buildings, buy land, they know how to do all that stuff. So we're excited they're here working with us to help the community do what else have happened. So, uh, this, uh, Thursday, six P M Hope Center, you're all welcome to come out. Uh, those are, it was, that were selected. And if you look on the bottom in your packet, you will see why, uh, those are the highest poverty areas in Michigan City. And so, you know, we were betting up a whole lot, but, uh, we're trying to make sure we can make changes in those communities and make impact. And it is community driven, so is that us or the city doing it? Yeah, it's, it's what the residents or the owners want to see happen. We've got a job here coming up, uh, Bay Fort at, uh, Blue Ship Casino. Um, we, we've got forty companies already signed up. We've been doing a lot of marketing, it'll be in the region next, next weekend, next two weeks. But we're hoping to get some people job because as you can tell, there's everybody, every employee in businesses in Laporte County is looking for people right now. Retail, hospitality, manufacturing, healthcare, city government. I mean, everybody is looking at people right now, so. And so we're looking at skill enhancement dollars, uh, Work One is looking at how to get people trained. Because some people may want a job, but when they go look for a job, it's certainly not qualified, which I hear a lot. So how do we get people trained to get those jobs? And then also people who are working, how do we enhance their skills so they can keep their job and do better and make better money? So again, uh, Work One has funding right now for that, so we're trying to make sure those, those dollars are put in Michigan City. Um, through different agencies in, in the community and also have a door people can make a phone call and get the help they need, so. Or objection of the next three years is housing, housing, housing. Um, that's a big issue right now, uh, workforce housing, but also doing rehab. Uh, something we have not done very much of in Michigan City. And so we're trying to go out and work with the city government to make sure that happens. We have a lot of oil, oil housing stock in Michigan City, how we get funding from the feds, the state, make those things happen. Um, workforce development, I mentioned, it's a big issue right now. Uh, market mall, um, building the business park infrastructure, entrepreneurship and also childcare. In terms of, um, the next, let's say, five years, uh, challenges for us means that public safety will be a big deal. Uh, perception of safety is a big deal for any, any community, so we got to work on that. Um, industrial buildings, we have no building written up for sale. It's large enough for a large company in Michigan City. We had one building that was for sale, we had six bidders and we lost a company with two hundred jobs, one bucks an hour in California because they didn't get the bid. So that's the market we're in. Um, the former federal model has just been bought and, uh, we have a company who wants to go in there and, uh, probably spend a couple of million dollars to get it spruced up and, um, out of, out of Milwaukee. But they are, they are, they're a investor owned company and what they do is they go in and rehab, rehab the building and then they lease it out to other companies, so. Uh, go back. Annexation plan, making sure we can, um, control our, ages of, of, of our city. Um, attraction for talent, we have, we need to get people here who want to work and, um, um, more people who, uh, for this company we have in business city. Um, the prison, uh, that's been a big discussion, um, during, during the, our, um, meetings the last few months. What's going to happen to that the next twenty years? Uh, we know West, Westville has a prison that's being, new, that's being built, always going to be demolished, probably a ten year project. What's going to happen to the one in Michigan City? It's a big question anybody's asking. Um, single family residential, new and rehab, affordable workforce market rate. Um, we need to figure out how to work on rehab in our community and also, uh, Brooklyn Institute, Lisk, Small Business Lab, we're working on right now. How do we improve the areas of the city that are not, you know, doing so well? Because these areas, they have one, one factor downtown, which is probably next five years over a billion dollar investment. And these areas are downtown. So how we make sure they get a piece of the pie? Because we can project what a million, a billion dollars we spending downtown in the next five years without this project we got in the pipeline, so. Question, comments?
Um, Mister Holt's, uh, looking at the, uh, poverty rate, uh, page that, uh, I guess it would look, seem to me that we have a, about a twenty five percent mean poverty rate in our community. And what are we? Is, is there anything actually going on to try to bring those numbers down with, uh, work with Work One and, you know, the schools and whatever might be trying to bring this down? Because I'm focusing on, you know, this midtown number because then I'm looking at your, the map here and I wasn't wondering how far down that the midtown section went because if I remember correctly, that there was supposed to be a plan for midtown. And it was never brought forward out of the planning department.
Well, we are working, not we're on a planning document, we were working more for an economic document. So everything you just mentioned, we're trying to incorporate workforce, um, money is for training. Because, you know, when you can get a good job is through trading, whether it's a union job or, uh, working for a manufacturer, but you need to have training. So we're trying to figure out how do you get dollars, um, in those areas with the schools, uh, A K Smith. So that's one aspect. Um, the other aspect is transportation. Some people can't get to work because of our final, so our system was set up. So how do we fix that in the future? So we talk about how to make those things better, but it's not going to be one agency. It's multiple agency talking to each other, uh, to make the areas improve.
Okay, and, and the, uh, so the, the, with this, the Brookings Institute, you know, there's other cities participating in that as I read this, uh, brochure.
Three.
Um, what exactly is the goal? To, I see this affordable housing, food insecurity, access to jobs, which you already said we have what, uh, uh, overabundance of wanted jobs to fill. So are people not being like given the information or, you know, how, how, how do we get to this point? And affordable housing always keeps coming up. Has there been any discussion about creating, trying to create some kind of cons- consortium, uh, consortium that the city and a not-for-profit take control of these homes and, and start reconditioning them instead of tearing up, keep on tearing them down?
Yes, I just have four questions there, so. Um, first one, um, food insecurity. Um, in a lot of areas you see with the high poverty, they don't have some market. And when they do, it's not the best food. So the question is, how do we either get a supermarket or a mobile food in those areas that has high quality foods or better quality foods? So that's one discussion. Um, access a job, that could be transportation, could be training, be childcare. So they, there's, there's not one, one issue, it could be, it could be multiple issues. Um, so how do you tackle those? Which agencies in the city, Laporte, a region can help us tackle those issues? Um, in terms of, um, housing, um, we work, working out a nonprofit to identify empty land to build on. Um, but, um, the rehab issue, something we've been talking about because instead of knocking them down, how we get federal dollars to fix them up? There is money is there to fix them up. We got to figure out how to do it in a very efficient way. Uh, and that's typical work with a nonprofit. And then the city got to hire more inspectors because when they get federal money, um, they have to be inspected by the city. Make that happen, like a project manager go out and make sure it's been done right. Because you can't put somebody in the house that's, you know, not, yeah, done, done, done right.
With, with that being said, on this project manager, is, couldn't that be handled by the individual that manages the C B D G grant?
Uh, typically he or she will manage two or three project managers because they, this person got to be out there documenting and work with the contractors, so.
I mean, it, it could be done, so it's feasible.
It's feasible and part of the money you get can be used to offset the costs of that person too, so.
And on, on those plans that are developed, are you ever contacted about those plans? Or when they, uh, put their plan together on the grant money from the feds?
Well, I'm not really involved in city housing, but I'm, I'm taking a look at it now more, more, um, deeper and just see where, um, you have a plan that's updated every five years. And so the plan ends this year, twenty twenty three, so you should be getting, uh, this should be a process sometime this summer to update the plan. And so the plan ends this year, twenty twenty-three. So you should be getting, this should be a process sometime this summer to update the plan.
Well, thank you, South Clarence.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other questions?
Well, thank you. Keep doing it. Keep working. We appreciate it.
My staff, before I leave, Lily and Caroline are here. I think I have some board members here from the E D C board. Wave your hand, please. I don't know where all that. So thank you for being here. So.
Good evening, Council President, all Council members. Double goal, Michigan City Fire Chief. Want to give you a quick report for March. Three hundred and forty-four incident calls, ten of them were fires. Two hundred and seventy-three medical calls, eight hazardous condition calls, six service calls, forty-two good intent calls, three false alarm calls, and one special incident type. We, seven Narcan's were used in the city of Michigan City. My apologies to Controller. I forgot to get this to you today. My fault. Just a reminder, the fire department is doing another testing period coming up for applications. We take applications year round. The call date is April thirtieth. So if you know somebody, please have them get their application in at City Hall or the administration building. You can get it on the E Michigan City website, print it out from that, fill it out and then get it turned in, please. If you know of anybody, please contact them. The Truck Committee has met twice and I've asked them to be able to give you guys an indication on what they are wanting to do by next council meeting. So hopefully they will have something that we can bring to you. And the information that Councilman Don Presbleinsky and Councilman Paul Presbleinsky has asked for, I am working on. I have it almost completed. I've been in contact with Sentinel, the repair facility that does major repairs on the T Rex, the Rosemar T Rex. He says he's going to have the complete history of it for me by Friday from twenty fifteen all the way up till, we, we have the last two to three years records right now. And I can get that information to you tomorrow if you want it, but I was going to wait till Friday to get the complete history of it.
Fridays, Friday's okay. And just for the other council members and for the public, what we're talking about, the, the T Rex, the million point three dollar fire truck that was purchased a couple of years ago seems to be in my mind having a lot of maintenance issues and just trying to get a handle on how much money we're actually spending on this truck and if the city needs to go in a different direction with this, with this piece of equipment. So. Friday, Friday will be fine, chief. And then just one more thing. And we were talking about that Ruby Woods incident that happened and you said that you were going to send out a report on what took place there. That's what the tank catching on fire and yes, we talked about it yesterday morning.
Yes, sir. I'll get that to you. I've talked to Fire Marshal Jeff Brewer and he's given me some information. So let me get with the police department, see what they have. And I'll get it to you.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilman.
Paul Presbleinsky. Uh, thank you. Chief of goal, you know, I've been tracking this situation with the T Rex and we had several discussions about the equipment failures of that particular vehicle. And at the last, I believe the last council meeting, you made insinuations that I said this and I said that. And then we had a conversation at the fire department and you admitted that that was taken off the record, but you insinuated that I said these things at different meetings. And I just want to let you know that whatever you, you insinuated at the last meeting or no, it's two meetings ago was not said by Paul Presbleinsky because I, you said it was at an A R P meeting and I had never attended an A R P meeting except for one last week. So I just want to clarify the record that what you said was untrue. All right. Cause it was not me saying those things. And I think that when you want to insinuate that somebody's saying things, you need to come and have the date and in the record so it can be investigated. But I appreciate you at least admitting that I didn't say that stuff and I will, I, I take exception when somebody says I said this or I said that.
Okay, Councilman Paul Presbleinsky, I never stated or insinuated that you said that, those statements. And I did actually give a date in the meeting that it was set at. I, I, you did not say it, but I didn't feel that it was, was appropriate to point out the person or people that did say that. So it was never insinuated.
The way you.
I said a council member said this.
The way you.
What I stated, I said two council members had statements and I read the statements exactly how they said them at the meeting. I never insinuated it was you.
Okay. Well, that's in the record. Thank you.
Anything else, President? Okay, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
What would be a special incident? What would be a special incident?
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me see if it's.
You have to give them the incident specifically.
It doesn't. I can look it up, but it doesn't say actually what it is.
Normally classified as a special incident. Like cat in the tree or something. I don't know.
I'd have to look it up. I don't, I don't want to make assumptions. There's, there's like nine different categories that we put our reports under. So all those, all it says a special type of business, incident and then slash other. So it could be anything. But I can, I can find out.
I was just speaking.
Okay.
Uh, Councilman President.
Yeah, chief, one more question. What's the use of Narcan?
Yes, sir.
Is it up? Is it down?
I, I have a feeling somebody was going to ask that and I'm probably remembering I don't.
Well, since I'm really concerned, you know, with the use of that because that tells me that there is drug issues, people are overdosing and something that has to be looked into.
I must have cleaned my folder out here, but I believe that is down. I want to say some of the numbers that I've been reporting are ten or above. So I'll look at my records tomorrow.
All right. Well, okay, then just for next month or when, when you're coming to the next presentation. Can you bring like a bar graph?
Sure.
Where we're at month to month?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Any other city officers or department heads, mayor, oh, Mr. Shen.
Good evening, Council. Ed Shen, Superintendent of the Parks. I'm here because you requested that I give you a progress report on the special purchase at Patriot Park and the fencing. Swenson Field, the fence posts have been reset. There are some bad spots of fence to be removed. We are awaiting a new fence to be woven in, new fencing material to be woven in. And we hope to have it up and running this weekend. Banworth and Doyle Field, Doyle Field is the one that had the dangerous backstop. The home run fencing has been dropped. The contractor is resetting and replacing poles starting tomorrow. We will be using these fields this weekend. This is not going to be an issue, however, as we will be using the short fence to shrink the fields for the younger players and no one will be near the permanent fencing. The completion of Banworth and Doyle should be next week as well as Carstens and LaRocco, weather depending. I would think that this whole project should be complete in a matter of two weeks, weather depending.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Shen? Uh, Councilman Simmons.
I'd just like to thank you for doing such a great job with West Scott Park.
Well, thank you, Mr. Simmons. The sanitary district should be patted on the back. We started out that project when you requested it last year, but sanitary district has been taking over the maintenance of that park and they are doing a great job. You're right. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Do have one online. Chief Forker.
Good evening, President, council members. Sorry for my absence. I'm down in India for some training this week. Just wanted to update on our applicant processes that we have going on. Back in January, we conducted a, an applicant testing in which we had seventeen applicants. Those applicant, we did an expedited process. So those applicants have come to fruition, I wouldn't say come to fruition. We're just waiting for a local pension board meeting, but out of those seventeen, we were able to give, or offers to three of those have passed everything. So again, we're just waiting for a local pension board meeting, which should be happening soon to, to get those office, three new officers hired. Of the testing we conducted in March, we had twelve applications, six of which passed and are currently in background. Those are being finished up and they'll be going to per for physical and psychological. Obviously, this is just a small task right now, a small dent or small, I would say relief, I guess, in our big dent that we have. We want to thank the council for their support recently and working on some negotiations with our Dunes Lodge seventy-five negotiation team. And we look forward to their continued support of the police department as we tackle this battle of getting the full staff. So again, I just wanted to thank the council and give them a quick update on some of those processes. And we're working hard to, to get the full staff and would appreciate your continued support as we move forward.
Thank you, chief. Any questions for Chief Forker, Councilman Simmons?
Yeah, chief, just refresh our memory. How many officers are presently in the academy?
We have six that graduate at the end of the month, April twenty-eighth. So they'll be coming back. They did do a few months of F T O. So we're looking to have them cut loose on their own here and by, by summertime. So we're looking forward for that little bit of sigh, sigh of relief. Let's say, let me give a, I would say a bad news update. We did have an officer submit their two week resignation last week. So that is very effective this week. Again, unfortunately losing them to another department. The officer did not indicate which department, but just that they were offering a better opportunity for her.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Chief Forker?
Yeah, Chief Forker, Councilman Don Purblinsky. So with the three that are graduating from the academy and the six that have graduated from the academy, that brings up to nine, correct? So how many officers would we still be shorthanded? Well, you said.
Six are actually graduating the academy. Three haven't been hired yet. They were just given conditional offers.
Oh, okay, okay.
And they've completed all the whole process now, except our local Michigan City Pension Board. We just have to basically accept them into our pension fund. Just a formality on that end, but.
Okay, with the six, with the six graduating, what does that bring the number of two of active officers?
I guess I would rather not say, you know, I would say our current.
Okay.
Yeah, publicly, you know, obviously we can, you know, be more than happy to give you that number. You know, obviously, you know, when, when it comes to public safety, we, you know, we want to rest sure that the cities, the citizens of Michigan City, we are fully staffed or on each shift. We have our, all of our districts and all of our areas covered. You know, unfortunately, we've been paying overtime to, to do a lot of that, but we have been fully staffed in each shift. But again, we're just looking to get those officers out on the street here by June. It'll help. But again, it's just some young officers as well. So.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, chief. Any other questions? Uh, thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Are there any other city officers or departments? Ms. Nyle, petitions?
There are no petitions.
Communications?
Correspondence was received in the clerk's office on April sixth from Councilwoman Ziegus requesting to read the proclamation in its entirety regarding Arbor Day.
Councilwoman.
Thank you. Um, this is a proclamation from the city of Michigan City, Indiana. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And this holiday, Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than one million trees across the plains of Nebraska. And whereas twenty twenty-three marks the one hundred and fifty-first anniversary of this holiday and Arbor Day is now observed by, across the nation and throughout the world. And whereas trees are one of Mother Nature's greatest renewable resources, giving us wood for construction, fuel for fires and paper to correspond. And whereas trees are a friend to earth and its inhabitants by reducing the erosion of precious topsoil via wind and water, trees absorb atmospheric carbon dioxide while releasing life sustaining oxygen. And trees moderate the temperature, all the while providing a habitat for a myriad of wildlife. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of spiritual joy and renewal. Trees increase property values, enhance the vitality of business areas while beautifying the overall look of our community. And whereas the city of Michigan City is most fortunate to have a dedicated members of our tree board working effortlessly, effortlessly to provide a cleaner, healthier and more tree filled Michigan City. Now therefore, I, Mayor Dwayne Perry of Michigan City, Indiana, do hereby proclaim Saturday, April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three as Arbor Day in the city of Michigan City and urge all citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and wildlands and further urge all citizens to plant a tree in the benefit of this and future generations. They did this eighteenth day of January, twenty twenty-three. Thank you.
The eighteenth day of January.
Um, yes, they wrote the proclamation early, but the date is April twenty-ninth. And we are celebrating with the Earth Extravaganza at Krieger. And tree boards giving away, we have a thousand trees to give away there and the next week at the farmer's market, the first day.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Yes.
Okay. In accordance with the ordinance number four by three, the clerk's office received on April tenth a accident report regarding a Michigan City police vehicle. There are no resolutions this evening.
Ms. Nyle, can you please read our first ordinance on a second reading by title only?
An ordinance on second reading by title only, creating section two dash four one nine in the Michigan City Municipal Code to establish criteria for utilization of public safety lit funds. And this is introduced by Ms. Deitch and Mr. Paul Presbleinsky.
Any comments from the sponsor?
Yes, I move the table indefinitely until we get through with conversations and negotiations with the season fire.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Deitch to table indefinitely and a second by Councilman Paul Presbleinsky. Ms. Nyle, upon the vote, please.
Mr. Don Presbleinsky?
Hi.
Mr. Simmons?
Hi.
Ms. Jagus?
Hi.
Mr. Paul Presbleinsky?
Hi.
Ms. Toman?
Hi.
Mr. Dabney?
Hi.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Hi.
Mr. Mack?
Hi.
And Ms. Deitch?
Hi.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nyle. Can you please read our next ordinance on second reading?
An ordinance on second reading by title only, creating Article ten and chapter twenty-two entitled rental inspection program. And this is introduced by Ms. Jagus.
Any comments from the sponsor?
Um, yes. So we have some, we had input from lots of city departments and people and we needed to make some changes in the ordinance. And so this is why the, the workshop was canceled last week. So we did make some changes. The most specific ones are that the rental registration fee is now five dollars. And then there is no fee for inspection or reinspection. And that the registration will be due by October first every year. Those are the major changes. And I'm going to ask the council if we could please table this until after we do a workshop. So I have planned to workshop Monday, April twenty-fourth at five P M. right here so that we can get more input from people and see where we, you know, might have issues or some questions. So if, if you would like, I would like to table this until the next council meeting.
I have a motion to table on the floor as that's second.
Second.
The motion, uh, table by Councilwoman Jiegus and seconded by Council, uh, Councilman Mack. Ms. Nyle, upon the vote, please.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jiegus?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Prespolinski?
Nay.
Ms. Tillman?
Nay.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Nay.
Mr. Mack?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
And Mr. Don Purblinsky?
Aye.
We have six in favor and three opposed.
This ordinance will be tabled until our next meeting. Ms. Nyle, can you please read our next ordinance on second reading by title only?
An ordinance on second reading by title only, amending ordinance number four-six-five-oh, commonly known. As the twenty twenty-three salary ordinance to establish. A monthly compensation for members of the Michigan City Board of Public Force and Safety. And this is introduced by Mr. Paul Prespolinski.
Any comments from the sponsor?
Yes, um. Mr. Fitzpatrick, I'd like to table this indefinitely.
We have a motion to table indefinitely, or is there a second?
I'm seconding it.
Thank you.
A motion by Councilman Paul Prespolinski to table indefinitely and seconded by Councilwoman Deitch, Ms. Nyle, upon the vote, please.
Ms. Jiegus?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Prespolinski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Mack?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Prespolinski?
Aye.
And Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nyle, can you please read our next ordinance on second reading by title only?
An ordinance on second reading by title only, amending ordinance, I just read. I'm gonna read it again, an ordinance on second reading by title only. An ordinance of the common council of the city of Michigan City, Indiana, approving amending the beachwalk phase three B. P U D planned unit development, and this is introduced by Mr. Don Prespolinski, Mr. Dabney, and Ms. Jiegus.
Any comments from the sponsor?
Uh, Mr. President, we'd also like to have a third reading on this uh, ordinance this evening. But I would like to make a couple comments, uh, I know we talked about this ordinance. Uh, at the last meeting, and there is no, as far as I can see, no issues whatsoever. The development of this uh, project. Also, uh, I know that we talked, and developer talked about, Mr. Willoughby did. The attorney about the, how the. Facing of the units are, that the front and the back will look alike. And they had along Washington Park Boulevard, there's not gonna be any parking whatsoever about each. Complex will have a parking garage and a driveway. Uh, I guess two or four cars to be accompanied there. And any overflow parking would be, then be directed to the main parking lot of the uh, beachwalk development. And there's also a area of uh, forestry and trees, I think it's four point five acres. Somewhere to that effect, that, that area there will not be touched and it'll be left alone. So I, just my own personal viewing of this and taking a look at the area and taking a ride out there. I think it's a great project for the area, and I think we should uh, move forward with it. Hold second, third uh, on it tonight, let the development get started. Thank you.
Any other comments from the uh, sponsors?
Yes. Yep.
Councilman Dabney?
Yeah, and uh, just to reiterate, uh, what we said, what was said at the last meeting, this came out of the uh, planning commission. Of a unanimous uh, favorable vote.
Thank you, Councilman, any other comments from the sponsor?
I second, uh, moving to third reading.
Was that a motion?
He made a motion, but he had comments out.
Okay, gotcha. We had a motion by Councilman Don Prespolinski to, I have third reading this evening and seconded by Councilwoman Deitch. Ms. Nyle, upon the vote, please.
Mr. Paul Prespolinski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Mack?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Prespolinski?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jiegus?
Aye.
We have nine in favor.
Okay, any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Comments from the council? Councilman Paul Prespolinski? Councilman Deitch? All right, this uh, ordinance will be held over for third read, Ms. Nyle, could you please read this ordinance on third read?
An ordinance on third reading by title only. An ordinance of the common council of the city of Michigan City, Indiana, approving mending the beachwalk phase three B. P U D planned unit development, and it is introduced by Mr. Don Prespolinski, Mr. Dabney, and Ms. Jiegus.
Any comments from the sponsor? Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Comments from the council?
Motion to approve.
Uh, we have a motion to approve by Councilman. Dabney, uh, uh, Councilman Don Prespolinski and seconded by Councilman Dabney.
That's fine.
Ms. Nyle, upon the vote, please.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Mack?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Prespolinski?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jiegus?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Prespolinski?
Aye.
There's nine in favor and no one opposed.
Ordinance says fast, Ms. Nyle, could you please read our next ordinance on second reading by title only?
An ordinance on second reading by title only, an ordinance establishing a fund for specific maintenance and repair of brick streets. Within the city of Michigan City, Indiana, and this is introduced by Mr. Paul, Paul Prespolinski.
Any comments from the sponsor?
Um, yes, I uh, after discussion with uh, legal staff of uh. Critiquing the uh, initial ordinance that there needs to be some language change. And, and I would like to table this till our next regular meeting.
We have a motion to table.
Support.
By Councilman Prespolinski and a second by Council, Councilwoman Deitch, Ms. Nyle, upon the vote, please.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Mack?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Prespolinski?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jiegus?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Prespolinski?
Aye.
And Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nyle. Ordinance will be held over to our next meeting, could you please read our next ordinance by, on second reading by title only?
An ordinance on second reading by title only, an ordinance creating a permanent sidewalk fund for sidewalk repairs for the city of Michigan City, Indiana. And this is introduced by Mr. Paul Prespolinski, Ms. Tillman, Ms. Deitch, Mr. Fitzpatrick, and Mr. Don Prespolinski.
Any comments from the sponsors?
Yeah, Mr. uh, President, I'd like to make a comment on this particular ordinance. Uh, this has certainly been needed for quite a while. I know that during budget process time, you know, there might be a hundred thousand put into it, two hundred thousand put into it, whatever. It seems to me what's left over in the budget, we'll put that into sidewalks. But the more and more, well, I, let me go back, that, back in twenty, that have been two years ago. Yeah, before we got into this issue with our. City engineer, uh, we haven't had sidewalk work done for two years now. And I know I turned in a list, Councilman Paul Prespolinski turned in a list. Councilwoman Tracy Tillman turned in a list for sidewalks to be fixed, and not one sidewalk has been fixed yet. On, on any of those lists, and I know that the list existed because I talked to the uh, engineer about it. But Mi- Michigan City has to get serious about making its neighborhoods and improving the neighborhoods. Uh, even down the parks, uh, Washington Park, there are sidewalks down there that are in uh, in, in need of repair. Uh, you know, I look, I live on Gardena Street, I see people pushing uh, strollers, walking with their young children. Down to Gardena Playground, and I know that there's a number of sidewalks that need to be repaired on Gardena Street. And I think a progressive city is a city that has walkable neighborhoods. Because people love to get out and walk, people love to get out, ride bikes. People love to get their families out, go for stroller walks and take their young childrens for walks. And Michigan City needs to go in that direction. We're worried about putting, you know, gigantic, you know, big progress north of Eleventh Street. Well, we need to take care of the whole neighborhoods and make them all compatible. So everybody in Michigan City can enjoy, whether you live on Barker Ave, whether you live on Fulton Street. Whether you live on South Ohio Street. We need to get this uh, this funds, this money in this fund. So that we know every year, we can turn in sidewalk lists. And hopefully those lists will be worked on and repaired. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, any comments from the other sponsors? Councilman Don, uh, Paul Prespolinski?
Uh, I uh, I do think that this uh. Ordinance should have been uh. Worked on years ago, and I think that I, I just wanted to get it. Start moving forward and get some money in this uh, fund. And so I'm working out some language here, and I want to include everyone. That's sponsoring on the list. So I did take out some language that was uh, that our controller commented on. And we're, I'm gonna add some uh, additional language, but this ordinance was uh. Research by the legal department and it was critiqued by the legal department. Because we're changing the code and it has to be codified. So anything that I wanna change, I gotta get it through the legals. And that's what, that's what I'm doing, and we, I didn't have time, it's my issue. On getting this to correct language in here, so this money cannot. Be used for any other thing, is only to be used for neighborhood sidewalks. And that's where we're at because of what happened here with the project on uh. On the uh, north end, on using the sidewalk money, depleting uh, sidewalk money to use. On, on the north end in the Tiff District. So to me, that they have money, a hundred thousand dollars isn't that much. But it's big in the neighborhoods because uh, there are some sidewalks, there's no doubt about it. And I got into this when I was on the city council back in the nineties, that. There was not a program established, but it was a voluntary program. And that it was a, a fifty-fifty program by the city that the city paid half. And the uh, homeowner paid half. And then what happened is that it got too expensive for contractors to bid on this job. Because they wanted a million dollars in insurance, so. A lot of the contractors dropped out and didn't even bid on the sidewalk work, and then he went higher. Uh, with, with uh, a bigger, bigger firm that had that amount of insurance to uh, cover it. But at this time, I'd like to make a motion, I don't wanna beleaguer this any longer than I have to at this moment. I would like to make a motion to table this till our next meeting, so I can get the language uh, straight. And everybody gets a copy of it prior to the next meeting.
Second.
Thank you.
To table by Councilman Don Prespolinski, I mean Paul Prespolinski until our next meeting and seconded by Councilwoman Deitch, Ms. Nyle, upon the vote, please.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Mack?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Prespolinski?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jiegus?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Prespolinski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
And Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nyle, can you please read our. Last ordinance by title only?
An ordinance on second reading by title only, an order, ordinance establishing a fund for subsidizing sewer lateral repairs. With the city of Michigan City, Indiana, and this is introduced by Mr. Paul Prespolinski, Ms. Tillman, and Ms. Nelson Deitch.
Any comments from the sponsors?
I uh, I was just like.
Your mic, your mic's not on.
Excuse me, excuse me. President Fitzpatrick, I introduced this ordinance. Because of. A lot of people having uh, sewer problems, and what I mean by lateral sewer, it's your connection. To the main, which is on uh, city. It's on the city right away, or it could be on the easement. And the way it is right now is that the sanitary district passed a ordinance. And I have the document here. Back in two thousand seventeen, when there was, they were trying to enact a um. Stormwater fee on us. But any, but anyway, the way the ordinance reads is that the homeowner has to pay half. Of the uh, bill. For work on the easements. Say there's a class sewer, and a lot of these sewers are uh, the uh, tile sewers. That usually have the problem, but some people are paying an exorbitant amount of money. One bill that I, that I saw from a lady on Pearl Street, her share of the bill is twelve thousand dollars. And it, I just, it's un- unbelievable, but anyway. That's why I in, I introduced this and I got, gotta make some language changes. And I wanna table this also till our next meeting, so that we can get this, the language stringed out. And move forward on this, and this is a good thing because it'll help. It'll help the residents and uh, I also took out the language that uh. The controller uh, didn't specifically want the uh, verbiage in there about uh, the general fund. So that's gonna be.
We have a motion to table by Councilman Paul Prespolinski, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, we have a second by Councilman Don Prespolinski, Ms. Nyle, upon the vote, please.
Mr. Mack?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Prespolinski?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jiegus?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Prespolinski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
And Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Oh, aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Ordinance is tabled.
Uh, Mr. President, if I may, uh, since it was tabled. Can I still be added as a uh, co-sponsor? I'd like to be as a sponsor for this ordinance. Yeah.
Okay, no, thank you, Councilman, uh, new business?
Oh, I'm sorry, just, I'm, grab it, just a quick question. Uh, with, with some of these, are, there gonna be any workshops or anything, or you just changing the language and then sending it out to us?
Uh, I, I'm gonna change the language and get it out to you, and if you, if you wanna workshop, I have.
I'm just asking.
I'll have a workshop on all three of them at one time.
I'm fine.
You know, and uh, I. I would like to discuss it here and have an exception on the time. Be- because I think it's important for the public, you know, to be involved with the discussions that we have. Because these are, these are very important, and that's why I brought them to the table. You know, it's just. I really felt bad for this one lady, um, she's trying to retire, you know? And she's got a twelve thousand dollar bill.
All right, thank you. Uh, new business, we have nine unfinished business. Mayor Perry is requesting the advice and consent of the Michigan City Common Council regarding his appointment of Gigi McCabe, McCabe Miley. To the Michigan City Historic History Board, term began immediately and expire March fifteenth, twenty twenty-six. Uh, Ms. Nyle, upon the vote?
Do you, we need a motion?
Oh, I guess we need a motion.
I, I move that we accept and provide the advice and consent for Gigi McCabe Miley.
Motion to accept by Councilwoman uh, Deitch and seconded by Councilwoman Tillman. Ms. Nyle, upon the vote, please.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Prespolinski?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jiegus?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Prespolinski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
And Mr. Mack?
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Congratulations, Ms. McCabe, Miley. Hope I'm saying that right, uh, next we have a vote, um. Mayor Perry is requesting the advice and consent of the Michigan City Economic Council regarding his appointment of Carolyn Miller to the Michigan City Cemetery Board, replacing Paul Foreman. Term will begin immediately and expire December thirty first, twenty twenty three. Is there a motion?
Yes, I move that we, um, accept the advice and consent of Carolyn Miller to the Michigan City Cemetery Board.
But we have a motion by Councilwoman Deitch and second by Councilman Paul Presmelinski. Ms. Nigle, one vote please.
Mr. Don Presmelinski.
Hi.
Mr. Simmons.
Hi.
Ms. Jergis.
Hi.
Mr. Paul Presmelinski.
Hi.
Ms. Tillman.
Hi.
Mr. Dabney.
Hi.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Bye.
And Ms. Deitch. Ms. Deitch.
Thanks.
Oh. Hi.
Your mic's not on.
And nine in favor and no one opposed.
Congratulations, Ms. Miller. Uh, nominations. The council has the following appointment to the Michigan City Social Studies of American Mills. Term expired February fifteen, twenty twenty three. All are one-year terms, uh, incumbent vacant ministerial side association. Do you have any letters in, Ms. Nigle?
No, we have not received any correspondence. But I did reach out. I said I would and they, um, said they will get something to the clerk's office.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, moving on to a public comment, um, the rules for a couple of public comment. If anyone wishes to speak, they must come to the mic, uh, state their name, address for the record, and they have three minutes to speak. Any comments from the public?
Hi, Ernie Hallahan, three oh two Bladus Street. To start with, I wanted to apologize for the last meeting. I was unaware that my left hearing aid was completely gone. I just received a renew one this past, past week. So they're both working. And I can hear you guys good. Otherwise I can't hear anything without hearing aids. But I'm still wanting to oppose this landlord thing. I know you're gonna hold a workshop. I did show up for the last one and it was canceled on me. And I didn't, wasn't aware of it. Unfortunately, me and another lady showed up and I was informed by the, uh, inspector that it had been canceled. Nobody put a note on the door or anything. She finally said she was going to do it. So that's how I found out that it canceled. So I will be here next, next meeting. And, uh, I see in the paper today that you're receiving more funds from the government for paving, I hope. I hope they add more to what they've already scheduled to be paved because a lot of streets really need it bad. And I, I really hope they add, especially Pott Road. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hallahan. Any comments from the public?
Hello. My name is Alicia Ortiz. My address is six five 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 Wildflower in Portage. And I'm here as a representative for the State of Indiana Real Estate Investors. And I just wanted to make a co, a comment. Um, Councilman Paul, sorry, I can't pronounce your last name. Chris Valinsky had made a comment about affordable housing. And I will say from working with municipalities across the state, as soon as a landlord inspection is passed, people put their houses up for sale. It creates more more, uh, problems for affordable housing because there's either selling, they're selling them on a rock or they're selling them to big corporations from out of town. There's one city not far from here, the day after they passed the inspection, there were three hundred and fifty packages, which amounted to approximately two thousand houses that went up for sale and on the market. They were all sold to out-of-state investors and now they're having really is, really big issues. There's enough ordinances and enough state laws that are on the books that, that municipalities don't need these type of inspections. I mean, if you, if you need to know the state laws, I can give them to you. I work closely with the laws from Indiana. And, um, I am glad that you got the laws straight in regards to what you can charge for rental and, uh, rental registration. Uh, but also please know that any money collected from this has to go into a special account and it can only be used to go back into the program. It cannot ever go into a general fund. And there's, I, I mean, I could get into other areas of that. But, um, you're gonna have a big problem here with out-of-town investors. If you, I mean, not that there are good out-of-town investors, but I would work with your investors you have here. You know who the bad ones are and you know who the good ones are. And you have a code enforcement, you have a health department, and you have building inspectors. And I, I think you should use them all. Thank you.
Thank you. If, if possible, could you forward that information you were, uh, referring to, to our city clerk's office?
In regard, which part?
The state laws that you were, you were, uh, referencing.
Oh, you're giving them to me. Thanks.
But that's not all of them. But you know what? I'll send them to you on behalf of my Thank you.
Thank you.
Rodney McCormick, six seventeen Union Street, also the president of the Michigan City Housing Authority. Um, I've been seeing Millers or placards coming to people's doors. Just heard from this young lady. Um, real estate company she, she represents. Affordable housing in Michigan City is over. HUD knows it, but people here, I know we, it's election time. We all want to get votes. There will be no more affordable housing in Michigan City. Quickest property goes up, people from Illinois come and buy it and it's over. Um, I had one placard that even talked about bringing low-income housing back to Michigan City. That will never happen. HUD is not in the business of bringing back any projects in any city in Michigan City. All you have to do is ask your attorney. He will tell you the same thing. He's involved with HUD, uh, more so than I ever will be. This is not gonna happen. What will happen is section eight vouchers. That's the only thing we have left. And then they have a market value set on those section eight vouchers. Right now landlords have exceeded that ma, that ma, um, that value. Sadly, people in this city are gonna have to find places to live. Um, Sean, you brought it up gentrification or how you pronounce it is, it's real. It's overwhelming. People here quit believing what you read on these placards. Quit listening to these candidates who are running for office, who have not lived in our city, who don't wanna tell you the truth. I wanna win my election bad, but not to the point where I will mislead you. We need to partner up with the Michigan City Housing Authority and try to make fair market value homes and not low-income housing. Um, I also wanted to just talk about going back to the past again. Selection time. A lot of people listen to me. A lot of people don't like me, but the truth of the matter is we cannot afford to go backwards. We owe it to Officer Henderson, Richardson, Rodriguez and Shaparsky and also Mark Swistake. Not to give Ron Meyer another chance in office. Those officers laid their life on the line for us. None of them are here no more. All of them are going off to another place. They're not here. We got these candidate forums where we cannot have true debates. It's sad. These officers are not here, no longer here. And it was good officers. And now the crime is so out of control right now, we're gonna have to bring outside agencies in to help us. This is what happens when we get dictators in the office and people that don't wanna be held accountable for their actions. We cannot have this going on in our city. And I heard that there's individuals who don't like when I get up here and speak and say, you can come up and rebut me or you can come to my home, six seventeen Union Street. We can debate all day, but the facts are the facts.
Your time has expired, Mr. McCormick.
I appreciate you. Please get out and vote. Early voting has been miserable right now. Please get out and vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick.
Uh, Tommy Blavie, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. I'd like to cite section, uh, sixteen point zero eight, section G of the Michigan City Municipal Code. Tents shall not be erected, used or maintained on any lot except small tents that are customarily used for recreation purposes and are located on the same lot as a dwelling. Every use of tents for religious amusement and recreation business or manufacturing purpose shall not be permitted when a permit has been issued by the enforcement official in accordance with provisions set forth in Article ten, uh, or for twenty six. In other words, nobody has come to Michigan City and set up a tent out in the woods or anywhere else that is prohibited here. It's not like you see when you're on the news and these people are setting up living underneath the pre expressway overpass in these ice fishing tents. Inglewood Burby does not live here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blavie. Councilman, a vote.
Good evening, Matthew Babcock, FOP Dunes Lodge seventy-five, Brooklyn, Michigan City Police Department. I just wanted to reiterate what Chief Porcher said and that we're very appreciative of the city council and the Labor Relations Committee in having the talks with us over wages, uh, and to emphasize that we need to try to get this done as quickly as possible. We have our next hiring event coming up on May twentieth. And, uh, the sooner that we can have these wages updated, the sooner we can put that out to potential applicants and fill the vacancies we have. Uh, we have several officers who are still actively pursuing other police careers and, uh, hopefully some updated wages can help us, uh, retain those officers as well. Again, thank you.
Thank you, officer. Thanks for your service.
Kathy Stransky, two two three East Barker Ave. Um, a week, one would be a week ago last weekend, that I was down at the beach on Saturday evening. It was starting to get dark. There was a lot of people down. There was a beautiful night. And a bunch of cars came in. There must have been four or five of them. And they started doing that donut stuff down at the far end of the beach. They were rolling their cars and doing donuts and squealing their tires and making all kinds of commotion. And people with kids were walking down there. I, I just wonder for the summer, on the weekends, is there a possibility that a Michigan City police officer could be actually stationed in that park for his shift? At least from two to ten? Because it closes then. But it was crazy. And when the police department did come, people did call the police and they did come down. But by then the cars were gone. They only come down and make a bunch of ruckus for maybe two to three minutes at the most, but they're, they're spinning their cars all over the place. I mean, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Stransky. Any comments from the public? Any other comments from the public? Public comment is closed. Comments from the council. Councilman Presmelinski.
Uh, Mr. President, yeah, you know, a couple of meetings ago, I had, uh, inquired about the lit money and whether it could be used for the, uh, the kennels, yeah, for the animal control department. Because we, we have an issue out there and we're getting bids on, uh, building a new kennel uh, for the animals out there. That thing is totally outdated. Anyway, uh, from the attorney, he, he gave me a, uh, and I'm gonna give every council member a copy of what I got here. Uh, yeah. Attorney Harris gave this before the meeting. Anyway, I'm just gonna read about animal control. Who said if animal control is run through the police department in an effort to preserve public peace and order, then an argument can be made that this is an end. This is an allowable expense. Okay, there is no relevant case law regarding this usage. So I know that we gave ARP money towards that project. But now we can also use lit money towards that project. And we shouldn't skimp on trying to save a thousand here, a thousand there. We should make something state-of-the-art. Have a nice open area for these animals to run in so that we can add restroom facilities for everyone to use. And, uh, so that Michigan City can be proud what we have for the animal control department. So I'll give every council member a piece of, uh, uh, copy that. Uh, one more thing in regards to the, uh, Washington Park, uh, issue. And to me, uh, that, that is an issue and it's becoming an issue quickly now that the weather is getting nicer. And I have, uh, seen some of those instances, not this year, but in past years I've seen it, uh, what's going on down there. And of course, always the first, first reaction is to, uh, close the park at eight thirty, nine o'clock. Nobody from the public can come down to the park. Well, see, I have a different view on that because we all pay taxes to use that park. So why should we let a couple thugs push us out from enjoying beautiful sunsets with our family? And, and everything else that goes along with going to the beach in the evening with your family. So what, what I'm suggesting and the police department and the mayor can do with it what they want. Because I know that we can get the state police to come to Michigan City in a, I believe they call it a mutual agreement or whatever the particular term is, at no cost to Michigan City. Put a state trooper officer down there in Washington Park from five o'clock in the evening till ten o'clock at night, seven days a week, and bring all this nonsense to an end. And when it'll end is when somebody gets seriously injured down there or loses a loved one, then we'll all come up with solutions at that time. I've had it with Washington Park. I've seen it year after year where it gets shut down. You can't enjoy it. And that's not fair to any of us on the council, any of you folks in the audience, or even to the police officers that have to go down there and put up with this nonsense day after day after day. So I just wanted to make that comment and hopefully the, uh, police department and the administration are making, uh, recommendations to bring this under control. And finally, I would like to thank a gentleman that has worked for the Michigan City Golf Course for thirty-two years. His name's John Marshall. And what he's retiring at his position is the, on the golf course, you have a greenskeeper and he's the head gentleman that takes care of the grass and the greens and the tees and what have you and keeps it looking beautiful. Well, this year he has decided to retire after thirty-two years. And I just wanna wish him, uh, well in his retirement. He's been a great, a great city employee. He's coming up with great ideas for the golf course and has kept that golf course immaculate over the years that he's been here. So I just wanna thank John for all his hard work and effort and dedication in Michigan City. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman, uh, Councilwoman Tillman.
Um, thank you, Madam, uh, Mr. President. Um, I have a PSA on behalf of the Lepore County Prosecutor's Office for the Child Support Division. Um, to all custodial, I'm gonna read this out loud. Um, and this is pertaining to child support for those who have a monetary obligation to pay child support and for those who receive child support payments. To all custodial and non-custodial parties, Indiana's Child Support Bureau is in the process of transitioning to a new child support case management system. The transition period to the new system began in January of twenty twenty-three and is expected to be completed by the end of twenty twenty-three. As the new system is rolled out across the state, please be aware of the following information. What is INVEST, the Indiana Verification Enforcement Support Tracking System? INVEST is the state's new modernized child support case management system. Is INVEST available statewide? The new Is INVEST available statewide, the new system is being rolled out to the clerks and prosecutor offices across the state in phases. It will be available in Clay County, Vanderburgh County and Howard County. Lepore County actually was um is in phase three. Um these counties starting in January twenty twenty-three, updates about rollouts to other counties will be made available at a later date. What do custodial parties and non-custodial parties need to do during the transition process? Both custodial parties and non-custodial parents should note the following. Custodial parties, you will continue to receive child support funds as you currently receive them. However, if you currently receive a physical check from your local county clerk. Those payments will be sent from the Indiana State Central Collection Unit, also known as N S Q. Once your cases switched to INVEST, once the first check has been issued from N S Q, you will need to choose. From direct deposit or debit card for reci- for receipt of future payments. If you are not already set up to receive funds via direct deposit or debit card. Non-custodial parents, continue to make timely payments and regular review paycheck stubs to verify the withholding amounts is correct. If withholdings are incorrect, contact your local forty child support office. Or the Child Support Bureau Kids Line for private ca- for private cases. Which means if you had a child support order done pro se or private counsel. For easy payments, you can make um for easy payments, make your options. Um you can go to the W W W dot I N dot G O V backslash D C S backslash child dash support backslash make a payment. All parties, during each rollout period, there may be a slight delay in your payment processing. The rollout periods are not, are to be determined, more information will be available at a later date. And as that information becomes available, I will like to be able to share that publicly with you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. For that information, uh comments from the council. Councilman President asking.
Um to the uh. People that were here or on people who came to uh discuss this uh inspection program. I just wanna uh let you know that the reason I voted nay to table is so that the people that came here this evening. Could speak and I I wish that that would have pa- would have passed so. We can at least let the public in- enter their comments now uh. On uh the other day, on Monday, I was at uh the Board of Works meeting and we were discussing. Uh a ditch and at that meeting, the uh. Mayor. What I felt was a a attack. Uh myself. Directly by name and. Commissioner Tom Kavalek. On uh. Saying that we're beating a dead horse on sewers and drainage problems in the city of Michigan City. So I took that as, in other words, that. He's not in favor of doing any of these projects, that's that's the way I took that statement. But also at that meeting. When it came to the uh public comment section. The chair decided to impose restrictions on us that we couldn't use it as a public uh political forum. And you know, whatever whatever else the description was. And I I'll tell you that I really disagreed and I told the chair that I disagreed with that. That she did not call out the that the chair did not call out the mayor, that he was out of order, taking personal shots at us. And also that. Under that forum or trying to stifle any kind of debate. I reminded her that this is America and that we have a right to petition. The government and to have comments at public meetings. So I'm I'm gonna tell you, something's wrong here, something's really wrong. In this in this whole picture of how the public gets treated. And I I want, I just gotta tell you that this is way, what this is, this is just isn't correct. And uh I hope to see everybody, we're gonna schedule a workshop and I'm also, um I talked to. Our Attorney Harris about setting up a workshop on getting our details together on the uh. Four hundred and twenty acres, so we can. Come to some type of settlement with the developers. So that the taxpayers aren't on the hook for that boom-dag-all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments from the council? Is there a motion?
Move to adjourn.
Good evening, everyone. Have a nice night.